Commissioner Barrera has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Here.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
And Chair Keller?
Here.
We have a quorum of six Commissioners present.
All righty, thank you. And now if we could have the swearing in of the new Commissioner. Miguel Guerrero, please.
Unfortunately, the city clerk is a city official that has to administer the oath. However, Commissioner Guerrero has been appointed by the city council and can participate in tonight's activities. We would ask, though, that he participates and makes decisions and comments that are consistent with the oath of office, which is really to uphold and defend our United States Constitution and state constitution, as well as Emeryville's local laws.
I would note that both items on the agenda tonight are study sessions, so there's no formal action being taken by the Commission. It's just comments and direction. And we will make sure that the city clerk can attend next meeting and do the official swearing in.
And just for the record, would Commissioner Guerrero agree to make those decisions as I just described?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was kind of on the fly. We did very well.
Sorry for this hiccup.
So the next item is we're going to recognize our outgoing Commissioner Lawrence Buzz Cardoza, who served on the Commission for 11 years.
So where is Buzz? Come on up to the podium, Commissioner Cardoza. There we are. Okay. We have a resolution. Would you like me to read it, Chair Keller?
Would you please?
I certainly will. This is Resolution CPC number BC 1701. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, expressing the Commission's sincere appreciation to Lawrence C. Buzz Cardoza for over 11 years of service on the Emeryville Planning Commission. Whereas on April 18th, 2006, the city council appointed Lawrence C. Buzz Cardoza to the Emeryville Planning Commission to fill an unexpected vacancy due to the resignation of Joseph Lutz, whose term was due to expire on June 30th, 2008. And whereas the city council subsequently reappointed Buzz to the Commission for three-year terms on July 15th, 2008, July 19th, 2011, and June 3rd, 2014. And whereas Buzz's final term expired on June 30th, 2017, for a total tenure on the Commission of 11 years, 2 months, and 12 days. And whereas Buzz served as Chair of the Commission from September 2013 to June 2014, and as Vice Chair of the Commission three times, from July 2010 to June 2011, from August 2012 to September 2013, and from July 2016 to June 2017. And whereas during Buzz's tenure on the Planning Commission, a new general plan and new planning regulations were adopted by the city council following extensive deliberations and recommendations by the Commission, in which Buzz played an active role. And whereas during Buzz's tenure on the Commission, a number of major development projects were approved by the Commission or city council, and a number of long-range planning efforts were recommended for approval by the Commission and adopted by the city council, both too numerous to list by name. And Buzz played an active role in the deliberations on all of these projects. And whereas Buzz will be sorely missed for the depth of his knowledge of the city's history and for the good cheer and sense of humor he brought to all of the Planning Commission hearings, he is to be applauded for the no-nonsense, practical approach he brought to Commission discussions, and for his unwavering dedication to the welfare of the city and the improvement of its urban landscape. And whereas Buzz has served the city of Emeryville in various capacities that shepherded the city's rebirth, transformation, and prosperity. And whereas Buzz's commitment and years of service to the city are commendable and his leadership is evident in how graciously Emeryville has developed. And whereas Buzz's dedication and years of service provided wisdom and experience that helped everyone on the Commission in reaching good decisions. He was an avid supporter of most development projects, even when it pushed the button of his personal aversion toward ground-floor retail. Our debates on the subject made me, the Commissioner who contributed this whereas, look deeper and harder at how to make it work. Yet even then, one could not convince him of the potential benefits. His additional aversion of signs has kept Emeryville less commercial-looking, and his efforts as an architect serve as a helpful reservoir of knowledge that we all could tap into. And whereas his perspective as an architect has added much to the Commission's deliberations over the years, and his efforts to keep our town's illuminated signage below Las Vegas levels has been greatly appreciated. And whereas Buzz has made significant contributions in enhancing the livability and better good of the city of Emeryville for current and future residents. And whereas Buzz's thoughtful and insightful comments and wisdom on a variety of long-range and current planning issues will be greatly missed on the Planning Commission, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Buzz Cardoza for over 11 years of outstanding service to the city of Emeryville and its citizens as a planning commissioner, and wishes him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Approved by the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on Thursday, July 27th, 2017. I neglected to mention before I read all that, that for those who are not aware, it is the tradition of the Planning Commission that this is a collective effort, and these various wherashes were contributed by all of your fellow Commissioners, as you know.
As if you couldn't tell.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your comments, and I certainly enjoyed serving on the Planning Commission for those years. And I think you've got a number of challenges before you. E-Base has taken over our town, and I'm sure they're going to try and make it into a worker's paradise. But I'm counting on you to also think of the residents of this town also. So thanks again very much.
And we have a framed copy.
All righty, so moving on, next is we have an election of officers. And before we get into that, I just want to say that it's been a privilege and a pleasure to serve on the Commission as Chair for the past year, and to serve the other Commission members and our community at large. It wasn't nearly as daunting or as difficult a job as I was fearing it was going to be. So that said, I'd like to take the privilege and make the first nomination for our officers. And I would like to nominate, for her years of service and her guidance and just wisdom, Gail Donaldson, to be our new incoming Chair. And for her enthusiasm and just youthful enthusiasm and what she's done so far in the time here, I'd like to nominate Linda Barrera as our Vice Chair.
Second.
Are there anyone like to make a substitute motion of any type? All righty, we have a second and a nomination.
All right. On the motion to elect Commissioner Donaldson as Chair and Commissioner Barrera as Vice Chair. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrera is absent. Commissioner Donaldson?
I guess.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
No longer Chair Keller.
No longer Chair. On that note, I shall relinquish the gavel.
Okay. Do we need to change our name tags or?
Yeah, yours probably should go here. I'm going to the end of the lines, Gail.
Oh, thank you very much, Commissioners. It's an honor. It's an honor, I appreciate it. So, let me see what's on the agenda next. Next item on the agenda is nomination of a Planning Commission representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I've been serving since the beginning of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, so my term is up.
But at this point, I would like to renominate you for this position, as you've done a great job, and I think your years of experience are valuable, and we'd like to continue with that.
I'll second that.
Well, okay. If there's anyone else interested, that would... Okay, we might as well have a vote on that.
All right, on the motion to reappoint or renominate Commissioner Donaldson as your representative on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, moved by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrera is absent. Commissioner... Excuse me, I've got to reorder these. Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Six ayes. Commissioner Donaldson is renominated.
Thank you. Next item is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So anyone wishing to speak can come up and have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one right now, we will move on to the action recap. The minutes from the June 22nd meeting. Are there any corrections, additions?
I add one addition. I wanted to note Commissioner Donaldson's commentary around the signage, because I think she brought up a great point last time we met about the not necessarily liking signage on residential, and having a difference of opinion around signage on residential. So I just wanted that to be recorded.
So this is for item 6A, the public hearing on the Avalon Public Market signs?
Yeah.
Just to note that Commissioner Donaldson made a comment that this kind of signage was not necessary on residential. All right.
Does anyone move to approve the minutes?
I would approve to move the minutes with the amendment.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Banta, with the change suggested by Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrera is absent. Commissioner Guerrero, you would need to abstain.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kang?
Abstain.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
So that is enough votes to pass, four. Four approved and two abstained and one absent, so that the action recap is approved.
Okay, thank you. Director's report, Charlie.
All right, fairly brief tonight. The city council has had two meetings since your last meeting. Those city council meetings were on July 11th and July 25th. At the July 11th meeting, they approved six bike-share locations in the city, in addition to the three that have already been installed. You may have noticed, there's one right in front of City Hall. These were rolled out two or three weeks ago, and they seem to be getting good use already. There will soon be more. The council considered a noise waiver request for Saturday work at the public market on the new streets that are under construction there. The request was continued to the next meeting that was on July 25th because of concerns that were raised by residents of the adjacent ME apartments. And the council reviewed or received a report summarizing comments that had been made at the joint meeting between the city council and Planning Commission in May on small businesses, and they directed staff to pursue efforts to assist small businesses, including organizing regular networking events. On July 25th, the council passed a resolution authorizing the city engineer to approve plans and specifications for the abatement of the dilapidated house at 1264 Ocean Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to advertise forbids for the work. The council reconsidered this noise waiver from the public market, and they approved it with two modifications. First, that the beginning time was changed from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and South Market Drive was removed from the Saturday work. The vote on approval was three to two, with council members Medina and Pats voting no. And the council approved a contract with Environmental Science Associates to update the city's noise ordinance, which will be occurring over the next several months. And finally, in other matters, as I'm sure you've all heard by now, I'm pleased to announce that we have been designated as a California Cultural District. That designation occurred a couple weeks ago. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Charlie?
Congratulations to staff on the art designation. Very good work.
Thank you. It was a lot of effort by the staff of the Economic Development and Housing Division and other staff.
Did a fabulous job. Okay, disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
I did meet with the team from Barron Studio Architecture on the Doyle Street Muse project.
I have none to report.
I also met with Matt Barron regarding the Doyle Street Muse.
I had a similar meeting.
I had a similar meeting as well.
Okay, all right. That takes care of that. So our first of the two study sessions this evening is on the Adeline Springs proposed project.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and welcome to Commissioner Guerrero. So this is a study session for a redevelopment of a parcel on 3737 Adeline Street. So this is the site. It's about a little, almost a third of an acre. And this is what's called the, what we call the star intersection, where you have San Pablo running to the east, West MacArthur Boulevard running here. And to get you in context, we have the Lane Splitter building right here. Across is Adeline Place. In this area is what we call the M.A.S. building. This is where the project intersection is under construction. That's the project that has had some difficulties with fires recently. So there is an existing building, one-story existing building, around 6,000 square foot building, which has been used by the US Spring to manufacture and repair truck springs. The owner has decided to sell, the ownership has decided to sell and relocate the business elsewhere, and at the moment, they are still at the site and are leasing the site from the applicant, the current owner, which bought the property about a year ago. So this is the existing site plan, and this is the footprint of the existing building. What they are proposing is to demolish the building and replace it with a building which occupies a similar footprint, and the rear of the parcel will be occupied by a parking lot that will provide parking to the building. So the plan is to build 29 rental residential units and live-work spaces on the ground floor. The entry to the building will be off Adeline Street. This is where the lobby is. There is a community room for the residents, and the rest of the building is going to be occupied by the live-work spaces. And that's about 5,000 square feet in size. The rear of the building has the 15 parking spaces that I mentioned. The bike parking is located here, and the trash will also be located in this area right These are the second, this is the second floor plan and the third floor plans. Basically, there is a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units, and three-bedroom units over the four floors. So this is the fourth floor plan, and this is the fifth floor plan. On the top of the fifth floor, there is an amenity space about 2,000 square feet in size, which at this point has not been developed, but it's indicating where the amenities for the project lie. This sort of gives you the sections. The height of the building is 55 feet. Since on the ground floor, you have live-work units, the ceiling height on the first floor is 15 feet, and subsequently, each floor above that is 10 feet. So this is the unit mix. As you can sort of take a look at the different numbers and as well as the different sizes of each type of unit. Here are the elevations. This is the Adeline Street elevation. We have a concrete base with the glazing to kind of activate the pedestrian realm, and these will be the live-work units. The upper floors have cement board panel, and they also have what's a solid-stained wooden batten which serves as a second skin for a portion of the building. So this is additional, it's the MacArthur Boulevard elevation, and this is where the entry, the vehicular entry to the site will occur. This is the south elevation, so this would be facing the adjacent neighbor. This is illustrative of the proposed mural that they're proposing. And these are some of the perspectives. The applicant plans to go into detail of what the design concept is about and what the intention was behind the proposed design. In terms of conformity to planning regulations, this lies in the MURS zone, and there is a transit hub overlay zone. So what the transit hub overlay zone does essentially is to reduce the parking requirements by half. Use classifications, we have two users here, multi-unit residential, which is allowed by right in the mixed-use residential zone, and they're proposing what we consider a light live-work unit, which requires a conditional use permit. In terms of density, the base density here is 50 units per acre, and the bonus increases to 100. Their density, the proposed density, is 100 units per acre, and therefore, they will be needing 100 bonus points for density. FAR, the base is 1.5, which can be increased to 3.0. What they're proposing is 2.3, and this calculates to 53 bonus points for FAR. Height, this is in the base height of 40 feet, and with the bonus height of 75 feet, and they are proposing 55 feet, and this will trigger 43 points for height. So when, as the Commission is familiar, when a project requires different bonus points in different categories, we take the highest bonus points that is required, and that is the bonus points that they need to provide us. So in this case, it would be a full 100 points for bonus. So in terms of how they propose to get the bonus points, as the Commission knows, half of any required bonus points need to come out of affordable housing, and this project actually is going to provide affordable units in the project. And this calculates to five units, with one at very low income, two at low income, and three at moderate income levels. The remaining 50 points that they need, they plan to provide it by writing us a check towards contribution to the citywide fund to support local-serving businesses. And for every 10 points, they need to give us 1% of the project construction valuation, and for this project, that equals to 5% of the construction valuation that they will need to write a check for. Not sure what this is doing this. So in terms of unit mix and family-friendly design guidelines, the requirement is that 50% of the units need to be two- and three-bedroom units, of which at least 15% need to be three-bedroom units, and only 10% can be studios. The project does meet this requirement. In terms of family-friendly flow plans, these have not been submitted yet. This is not unusual. This is a study session, and the purpose of the study session today is to get initial feedback from the Commission. As I'd mentioned, that this site is in the transit hub overlay district, where all the parking is reduced by 50%. So when you calculate all that out, as outlined in the staff report, their requirement for this project is 15 to 24 spaces. They are proposing 15 spaces, so they do meet the requirement. In terms of bicycle parking, the requirement is three short-term and 31 long-term spaces. They are showing at this time 18 uncovered spaces. It's not very clear whether these will be secured or not, so this is something that they would need to rework to meet this requirement. In terms of open space, the required private open space is 40 square feet per unit, and that calculates to about 1,400 square feet. The required common open space is 20 square feet per unit, and this includes the live-work units as well. And our regulations also allow the common space to be substituted for private space, private open space at the rate of two to one. In terms of the proposal, we counted about 14 units that have a balcony. As I've mentioned, they also have a rooftop, common open space, that's about 2,000 square feet. Whether they all meet the requirement is unclear at this time, but they do know that they do need to meet these requirements, so they would need to figure this out as the project develops further. Sidewalk design guidelines, the applicable sidewalk widths in this area is 12-foot wide sidewalk with a minimum of 7.5 clear pedestrian pathway and a 4.5-foot landscaped area. The existing sidewalks are less than 12 feet. On Adeline Street, therefore, the proposed building will need to be set back by two or three feet. And along the MacArthur Boulevard frontage, either the building or the curb will need to move by two feet in order to meet these guidelines. A community meeting was held on June 13th. About seven community members attended the meeting. There was a concern regarding that there was not sufficient parking provided for the project. There was concern regarding potential shadow impacts on the neighbors. There was concern regarding the building massing in relation to the adjacent house, especially along Adeline Street. The staff also reviewed this project internally, and the suggestion that was made was to move the bulk of the building away from the adjacent house on Adeline Street and increase it toward the intersection of Adeline and MacArthur Boulevard. Keep in mind that the height limit here is 75 feet, and the height of the proposed building is 55 feet, so they do have some, they do have some room to maneuver, and that would trigger additional bonus points, but they need 100 bonus points for density in any case, so that would not change the economics of the project regarding at least the bonus points is concerned. The use of murals to cover some of the blank concrete walls was received with mixed comments. And there was some discussion of introducing road diet measures, particularly along MacArthur Boulevard, and there was discussion regarding including a new crosswalk on Adeline Street so that folks could walk across to the Lane Splitter restaurant. This is something that public work staff and planning staff need to work together, and we would be coming up with some recommendations down the road. So in terms of issues that we would like your feedback on is on design, does the Commission agree with staff to move some of the bulk of the building away from the adjacent house on Adeline Street and increase it toward the intersection? How does the Commission feel about the use of murals as design features? In terms of bonus points, does the Commission find the contribution to the Small Business Fund to obtain the 50 bonus points acceptable? And in terms of amenities, does the Commission have any suggestion for provision of additional resident amenities? That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and will be providing your presentation, so if you have questions for me, I would be happy to answer at this time.
So are there any questions for Maru?
I've got a couple of questions. Maru, maybe I misread one of your slides, but the parking slide that you talked about, did I see a discussion about 18 spaces versus 15, or was it just 15 spaces that are being proposed?
15 are being proposed.
Okay.
The 18 I think you saw was for bicycle parking.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, when you calculate or establish the height of a project, do you normally just take it to the roof, or do you not include any kind of balustrade or anything like that that goes above it, the roof line?
The basic height is till the roof line.
Okay.
The highest point on the roof line. There are certain features that are allowed to go above that, but the basic height is the roof, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you remind us, do you know what the height of the M.A.S. building is going to be, and the one on MacArthur across San Pablo Avenue?
So the existing M.A.S. building will remain the same. So the Maz, the existing Maz building will remain the same. You know, that's going to be adaptive. The residential building behind that is, I'm going by memory, but I think it is close to 70, 75 feet.
And the one, the affordable project, the affordable project on San Pablo?
Affordable project is also similar height. It's around 65 feet. The 3706 San Pablo, correct? Yeah.
Do you have questions for Maru?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and give a presentation? Thank you, Maru.
Yeah. So let me just zoom. Okay, should I just do it this way? How do you?
Do it however you like.
So I'll just use this.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Steve. My name is Carver Massey of Carver Massey Architects. This, there's also Ali Khashani and Joe Blum here that are the developers and the real people behind the project. And Jordan from my office is here also. We have a model, a side model of actually the entire block that we made. That would, it'd be nice to bring it up, yeah. Why don't you bring it up? Jordan ran into the door and broke the freeway, just like the Cypress. It fell right over. But so a couple of things that have kind of pushed us in a certain direction was the fact that, the fact that, you know, projects like this normally impact the people that are right next to them the most. And so we were trying to be as cognizant of that as possible because given the intersection, it's as kind of sturdy and gritty and urban and as kind of menacing and dark and deep and wide and everything you can imagine goes on in that intersection. So that sort of width of that intersection allows for the building to go up for sure. Building going up higher requires a different type of construction, which actually requires more money and budget. So we've kept the footprint of the new building fairly close to what's there now. So on the west side, we go out on the ground floor, four feet towards the west with our new footprint. And on the south side, next to the house, we're actually four feet away when the old building is actually on the property line. Our building sets back four feet. On the upper floors, we actually come back out to the property line on the south and go another eight feet out as a cantilever. So we've kept the ground floor, as Maru mentioned, to 15 feet of height, just to give the live-work a real sense of being live-work and kind of matching what traditionally retail space has been about. And then the upper floors, and that floor is actually all going to be concrete. And then whatever's above it is wood, which is fairly common. So as a sort of a gesture towards the house to the south, we ended up lowering one of the floors by quite a bit, actually, to put a garden up there. And it, we feel like it's, it's, it's a, so it's definitely a gesture, whether it's enough or not is sort of your reaction to it. But as part of the community meeting, we actually even brought it down and pushed it back a little bit more. We took one of the bedrooms on the south side and moved it around the corner to the other side. I can point to it in a second. So here's the, whoa, whoa, F5 is, I think is what gets me the full, come on. What did I do, Maru?
Just go to view. Full screen mode, yeah.
So this is the existing footprint of the building and there's a few little sheds in the yard to the west of the building. The building's around 20, we're kind of guessing, like 23 maybe, 24 feet. We counted the blocks to see how tall it was. But it's a pretty, pretty tall one-story building. And there's a lot of action in the yard that's in between the existing building and Vicky Sewell and Steve's yard. Oh, I went to, so, yeah, I mean, it's a pretty simple building, honestly. The footprint, both on the ground floor, you know, the lobby goes right through so you can get to the lobby from the parking, which is secure with fencing around it and a gate. And on the street side, you can come all the way through, get to the elevator, which is right here. And then these live-work units all have some access to the lobby, these four do. And then, but also access from the street. And these two have, actually, this is the only two that don't have access. This one from the back, this one from Adeline. So what I was referring to was this, this little bump out that we ended up with when we took a bedroom off of this end of the building on the next floor up. And you can see it here. And the reason we stopped there has to do with where the stair was. Because the stair can't really stop. It has to go up to the top floor. And that's also another issue with just raising this portion of the building up by taking this back, is that we need two sets of stairs to go up to the very top and provide exit. And that means a pretty tall, skinny thing kind of poking out of the top of the building. So it's, it's going to be hard to make it disappear. So as far as the shadows go, obviously, the winter time is the one that would be most impactful, given the sun is lower in the sky. And this, this, this shadow study is for the building that's there now. And this is for the one that we are proposing. I mean, we just basically got lucky in that both of our neighbors are to our south and to the west. So the sun, in essence, never really is going to be that big of an issue. And again, it's not something that we had control over, it just, we got lucky. And again, when you go back and forth between these two, which I did quite a bit, try to see, good Lord, I'm so sorry about this. It, they, they're pretty comparable. I mean, maybe the lower left-hand side, where the shadow is the most or the longest, has a little bit of an impact, but it ain't, it ain't much. So that's the shadow. In terms of the elevation, we like the idea of reusing some of the art, trying to find the artist, because those paintings are actually really nice, some of them. There may be a little too many of them and it's kind of not very well organized, but they, I mean, some of them are really nice. So if we can do it, we like doing it. If not, we'll figure out how to do the nicest thing with some board form concrete or something that is done basically on a lot of multi-unit housing projects. So, you know, in terms of the corner with the curved piece, we kind of like the idea of these balconies kind of doing something like this where as they curve, every other floor, they overhang the floor above and below. And it sort of created a nice form. And we felt like if, when you're driving by there in the, in the intersection, the movement is going to be something that's kind of interesting and, and fun and sort of new. You don't, you don't see that move much. This is the side facing the west with the upper right-hand side of the building having the garden. The mural, which doesn't have to be this sort of aggressive, can be dialed back a little bit. But this is one of the ones that are on the building. We basically just took whatever was on the building. Sections you, you saw, and then these couple of perspectives that puts the building in somewhat a context. It's a challenging site in that the area is, even with the, with the recycling center gone, is still a lot of sort of people with shopping carts and the, under the freeways, a little heavy duty. But I think an addition of a building like this would bring people to sort of use the retail that's there, the restaurant that's across the street, and in essence, add some life to the neighborhood. That's sort of a wanted kind of a life. And I think that's the end of it. So that's about all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And the developers here, if you have any questions from them?
Any questions? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned, I'm assuming that you're doing type 5 housing? That's what you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's just a question of the type changing if you have to go higher? And then I noticed in the conversation, there was a discussion around moving the building back in because of the width of the sidewalk. Do you have a dimensioned street section? Have you looked at that?
I think our, the survey that we have of the side shows it to be 10 feet.
Okay.
And I think the city's standard is 12. So a couple of feet is what we need to, to figure out how to, how to provide. You know, one, one thing I've noticed hanging out at that intersection a little bit, just looking at how things work, people come up right where that car is on the lower side, on MacArthur, and they barely stop at that stop sign and only look to the left because that's where the cars are coming. And they turn. And it is like you have to take your life into your own hands to, to try to cross. And there is no crosswalk on that side either. So that could be a, a nice thing and maybe a little bit of encroachment into Adeline would be more sort of beneficial to not allowing the cars to kind of zoom through. But we'll, we'll get there. We'll figure out how to get the 12 feet.
Okay. Those are my questions.
So Mr. Massey, I had two sets of questions. One dealing with parking and the other dealing with the, the murals. Starting with the parking, as you, if you've hung around that area, as you, as you say, you might have seen that parking is really sparse right in that immediate area and it's actually getting a lot worse, getting more and more congested. I'm purchasing a lot more cars kind of circling the block to find parking because there's been such a flourishing of, of retail in that immediate area, restaurants, bars, and you still got the pizza place there that's just really popular. Though this plan meets the minimum specifications for the parking allotment, given that this may actually make the parking situation and thus the traffic congestion a lot worse, so there's a potential of that. So I want to ask you, Mr. Massey, in terms of your parking, is that, do you know if that's going to be assigned to certain units or is that going to be just general parking for the development?
That's really not my department. Do you have any clue as to how you're gonna? It's, it's a little bit early, but we could have the answer for you for the next round, for sure. Just give it some thought and figure out how we're going to manage the parking. We are hoping that there would be enough sort of young professionals living in these units that they tend to have, have a tendency not to drive as much or even own a car.
Yeah.
You own a car, Jordan? Jordan doesn't own, maybe he can live in. But that, that's our hope. And I think that at the end of the day, it becomes a bigger marketing issue than a code issue for a lot of projects where would you rent in a place that didn't let you, didn't, didn't have a parking spot is what it comes down to. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll give that some thought, for sure, and come back the next time with some real answers.
Gotcha. So second question, questions on murals. You said that, there are a very interesting set of murals that exist right there. I agree with you on that. Could you elaborate on some of the comments that you received from staff about the proposal to use murals to cover some of the blank spaces? I believe Maru said the reaction of staff to the murals were mixed. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, I mean, like any art, you know, some people tend to really like and enjoy it and some people find it either too loud or too offensive or too, too urban in a way, you know, because street art is not really for everyone. We just did a project on a Mandela called Happy Hound. I don't know if you've, if you have been by it, but we found a young artist that did a painting on the building and it's just delightful. I mean, something, something really magical happened with it and it was really the first time you've ever done it. So it wasn't like something tried and true, but took a leap of faith and it worked. You know, it, it shows a certain amount of hand, you know, fingerprints on the building, handmade something. It's not just something you buy at Home Depot and slap it up. So I, you know, I, I think it's a good thing. And it also brings back a little bit of the memory of that building that's been sitting there for probably about 50 years. I don't know how old it is, but it looks pretty old. So that was our reason for putting it out.
Is it your intention to, to keep the, or try to preserve some of the murals that are already there?
That's impossible.
Okay. Is it, so you're, so you're intention to bring in new art?
Right. Which, you know, I'd imagine, I mean, I don't imagine, I know the city will have a say about what that's going to look like, you know. And I'm, I'm on the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. And that would be a place where something like this would be totally appreciated and welcomed to take a canvas, this public, to some local artist and have them produce something on it. Could be, could be a lot of fun.
Madam Chair, I know I said two sets of questions. I have one more that occurred to me, if I may. So I'm just going to ask my, my colleagues on the die is just... So I'm just going to ask my colleagues on the die, just to allow me a little latitude on this because I think it's a relevant issue for that vicinity, but it may not be squarely within the jurisdiction of what we're considering here. But just for the, but I think it might be germane as to what we're encountering here, just to get ahead of the ballgame a little bit. As you may know, Mr. Massey, that area has encountered some challenges with arson over the past year. And it seems that we still have, don't have that suspect in custody yet. So it seems like it's kind of a bit of a reputation now as being a little, maybe a risky area in which to develop. Do you have any special plans that might be relevant to install there in terms of security should this project go forward and you're allowed to build?
You know, I mean, given the fact that the ground floor up to 15 feet of this building is entirely concrete is going to be of some help. You can't just pour some gasoline on the ground floor and have it all go up in flames. I don't know how the other one was done or how the fire got started. But I would imagine the only way to try to keep someone away and keep them from doing it is to put up a tall enough fence and have enough security that they're deterred or they're sort of prevented from doing it. And aside from that, I think just the smallness of this maybe may help it as opposed to something as, because that thing you could see from downtown Oakland. It's a pretty tall building. And so, and it takes up a pretty good footprint. This is a fairly modest building when it comes to what's going on in the neighborhood. So who knows? You have a great point, though. It'll be a disaster if more of these buildings go up in flames.
Mr. Massey, you don't have current plans right now for, say, on-the-ground security?
Not right this minute, but I can guarantee that the developers will be working on it to make sure that the same thing doesn't happen to them. You can imagine how devastating it would be. So we'll come back with some ideas, for sure.
Just a couple of questions to start off with. So you said that the base, our ground floor level is going to be poured concrete. So in other words, you're going to have a podium base, correct?
Right.
So can you explain to me the difference of what would be the added cost of doing a podium base if you added another floor to that, if you're already making a concrete base? So if you added a floor to that, are you just talking some more structural rebar?
So the difference between a type 5 and a type 3 building is that all of your exterior walls basically have to be two-hour fire-rated walls. That's one thing. You go up one more floor, you need two sets of stairs to go another floor up. You need your elevator to have an extra stop.
Okay, let me just stop you there. You already have two sets of stairs. So that's not an added cost. But you're talking, okay, just another level instead of stairs, okay.
So, and then one big chunk of money that gets added on to it is that you need a man lift when you go over, is it 55?
60.
60. When you go over 60 feet of height, you need a man lift that has to be attended. That's for all the workers to be able to go up and down. And that is tens of thousands of dollars added. I mean, at the end of the day, every
Sure.
bit of the money that doesn't go into these buildings ends up kind of diluting their quality and all of that. We see it all the time, so.
So my second question is, and I don't know if you could get to the slide that everyone else could see, but I'm looking just more of the plot plan of the building sitting on the lot. And I'm wondering, you have the building fronting mainly on Adeline Street, which is what brings it right up to, that's a fine picture there, that brings it right up to the existing neighbor's house? Have you thought of positioning the building all along MacArthur Street and putting the parking along that south side that would affect the neighbors? And then we would kind of eliminate that problem.
Yes, so a couple of things. One was that when we first actually started, there was a podium that covered the entire site with the parking underneath on the ground floor and then the buildings were up higher. But it's right up against Vicky and Steve's garden. I don't know if you've ever been in that garden. It's a thing of beauty. And between that fact and the fact that we wanted to go to type 5 and didn't really want to build on top of a garage, we basically did this. Now, that house is most likely not going to be there forever, if for long at all. And the idea of sort of adjusting things to something that, because you know, there's enough site in that house that you could build nine units on it according to the rules we're using to do this project. And that is going to be, after this goes up, that's going to be an enticing thing to someone. So here we go, mushing things around to accommodate a house which is, actually it's really beautiful as an elevation, but it's like in really, really bad shape. I mean, just falling apart. Yeah, we actually kind of tried to figure out how tall it is and drew it up, but it's a little bit of guesswork. But yeah, I mean, it's, so, you know, and we are from this corner stepping down one, two, three, four times to sort of get a little closer to the scale of the house. But then if somebody built a, I don't know how many floors they would put up, probably three or four floors, then this garden on the third floor of our building is going to look silly because it's going to be sitting, you know, in a kind of a valley. So that was some of the things we thought about.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Hi, Mr. Massey.
Hi.
So the questions I have pertain to the bicycle parking. There was no mention of the security of the bicycle parking. Can you elaborate a bit on that?
Oh, of course. We actually have more than what's required and we have put them right here, which is under the piece of the building that overhangs. And the idea is that this entire site coming around here to here is going to be entirely secured by fencing, landscaping, and so on. So those are not only secure, but they're actually covered so that they won't be sitting out, sitting out in the elements. If I had a really good bike, I'd take it to my apartment.
Has there been any consideration to include internal spaces for residents inside the units?
It's actually brilliant. It's a really good idea. We'll definitely try to include some. I mean, the lobby is actually wide enough to accommodate some hanging and then we'll look at the units and see what, because there's so many different ways of hanging them now that we actually, our office in San Francisco has, the previous tenant had hung one from the ceiling. And if you just raise your bike and it just hangs from the ceiling. And it's nice sculpture. It's a beautiful thing, so lots of different ways of doing it. We'll make sure to include that.
My last question is about the vegetation that's on the side of Adeline Street. More of a consideration for pedestrians, ensuring that the vegetation doesn't protrude into the sidewalk? And so mostly just a recommendation in terms of the choices that you make there?
Right. We need to bring in a landscape architect to make sure it's the correct thing to be doing these landscape pockets these days, given the C3 requirements, which is the, you know, water filtering before it gets discharged, basically have to become sort of cisterns. So, and somehow something has to grow in them. It's a difficult thing, but we'll definitely keep that in mind. That's a really good point, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Kava, thanks for your presentation. I got a couple of questions for you. On sheet A 3.5, the sections. So you show the, so the first floor, the floor-to-floor is 15 feet. So the floor-to-ceiling is going to be something like 14 whatever, right? So not high enough to have a full mezzanine level?
Right.
But maybe you'd have some raised level or something like that. Did you look at possibly making it higher to, so you could put a mezzanine in there or get a, get a?
Yeah, it's that darn man lift. The minute the building gets higher.
So if you, but you said 60 feet is when the man?
Yeah, we're like five feet away from getting there.
So if you had another, what you need is 17 feet
Right.
clear, so you'd need three feet.
Yeah, I mean, that was one consideration. The other was to try to keep the square footage of the entire building to a certain number just because, as you know, you multiply that by the ungodly construction costs these days and it adds up to a pretty astronomical number. But anyway, that was, that was another reason why we didn't do it.
Got it. Okay, so sheet A 3.4 and one before that. So you show the mural. As you noted, it might be, some people might find it a little bit aggressive, et cetera, et cetera. Whatever you do put up there, because it is going to be overlooking the adjacent property, you are probably going to want to run it by that property owner to make sure they're going to be happy living with it because they're going to be looking at it, whether it's that house or a new development later on.
No, it's so true. No, absolutely. I mean, I didn't want to sort of break the heart of the staff person that put this one, picked this one to put on there by having him change it. But it definitely, you want something that you could look at every day and not start cringing because the teeth are starting to show and, yeah.
So sheet A 3.1. So you show in this elevation your use of the battens.
Right.
And the battens you describe as solid wood stained battens, is that correct?
Yes.
So would they be like four-by-fours or?
They're actually, I'm hoping they're two-by-fours.
Two-by-fours?
Because I'd like a little, I think what happens, and if you ever have a minute to go by that Happy Hound, we use two-by-sixes. And what really is the thing that catches your eye is their depth, not their girth or their width. I don't know why. But in a way, if it became wider, then you probably want them farther apart, which then I think that the tightness of it is what kind of works.
So the battens on the left, or I think it's the south side, the south edge of the elevation there, they extend up and then they stop at what looks like about railing height?
Yes, yeah, that was the idea.
Do they work as a railing?
Yes, yeah, that was the idea.
So you'll, I guess you'll have some kind of infill in there to make up the form?
There's going to have to be some sort of a structure to hold them up. I don't think it can just be as light as this shows.
Okay, and then your elevation shows the battens going right up over the windows
Right.
and the doors. And the windows are shown, I guess, with that little triangle. Typically, that means a casement window.
Right.
But would, because the battens are going over it, that would mean it would be a slider of some sort?
They would either have to swing in, which is not a good idea.
Right.
They're not drawn as big enough to be sliders, honestly. And they're just not drawn as, maybe the bigger ones in the, in the living rooms. But all of that is, are things that we need to sort of get through this stage where we're given a little bit of an encouragement to go work things out and we'll come back to you with these things figured out and working properly.
So you have, just not to belabor the point, but on the north side of the elevation there, where you have the terraces that stagger one over another, and you have the sliding glass, it looks like sliding glass doors.
Right.
Are the battens, are they?
They're on the outside.
Outer edge where the railing is?
Right, right, right.
Okay, so the battens, you're going to be looking through the battens at the view, whatever view there might be?
Right.
Okay, well, I think that, you know, doing something like this is, you know, to be applauded that you're taking a chance at trying to do something that is, you know, gives some artistic vitality to the area. This is clearly something that, I mean, this is a highly textural, literally a textural solution. And you say you've?
Is it a question or is it a discussion?
Right, here's my question. My question is, are you concerned at all about using wood and the straightness and trueness?
Right, well, not just me, but the developers sort of have mentioned that I need to have good answers before, before this is all sort of said and done. And we've talked about using other material that's more durable. One of the things that I would do in this case, because at that Happy Hound project, the actual length or the height of the slats are 20 feet. And it was basically, as we kept running into budget issues, the wood kept getting, it used to be kiln-dried cedar, western red cedar. It ended up being basically just whatever you frame inside of buildings with, duck fur, pretty rough. So one, the thing I learned there is to not rely on the length of it and come up with some detailing mechanism that shortens it. And one of the ways to do it is to actually, just simple thing like taking a piece of steel, like an eighth-inch piece of steel as wide as the wood, and just screwing from the bottom on the top, the pieces of wood. That way you cover the, you know, the end grain and boom. And you got something that the wood has to kind of work against. Because that thing is sitting wobbly. It's like going all over the place. So I think it's going to come down to that. And if these guys are going to be convinced that it's a good way to keep going, I need to convince them first and then come back and convince you guys.
On page seven of the staff report, the staff asks us to, what our opinion is of their suggestion that the bulk, that you move some of the bulk of the building away from the adjacent house on Adeline Street, increase it towards the intersection. There's been a certain amount of discussion about that by you already. Do you have any ideas about how you might want to address that particular comment beyond what you've done already?
I mean, you know, this, again, this little bit of, this move we made, bringing down or moving that one bedroom off of that end next to the house in this elevation on the left, was a response to lower the building a little bit. So is it enough? Is it not enough? How far do we go? How far in the other direction do we go? And then what happens when the cars have to get under the building itself to get to the parking, which is what's going to have to happen as we get into the gate area on the, can I just quickly do this? Ah, I'm going the other direction. So as it is right now, the edge of the building is here at 15 feet. And it's only two stories, but it's still all the way over here. If it goes over and you have to drive under it, I don't know. It's just, it, and, oh, the other thing, that's something I actually had in mind to bring up. This is as efficient as you can make a floor plan. And if we had a unit to get to back here, this hallway now has to extend And if we had a unit to get to back here, this hallway now has to extend all the way out here, which will eat into one of the units, and then we have dead-end corridors and all kinds of other bad things could happen. I don't know. I haven't really tried it. But if you guys are convinced that that's something that has to happen, then we'll look at it. And maybe I'll have better answers for you next time.
Thanks.
So my, my question is whether you have any other examples of this baton siding, aside from the Happy Hound?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm having a hard time understanding what it's going to be like from the inside looking out and from around the balconies looking out. And on sheet A 3.2, what the, where it gets darker and thicker, I'm not understanding how it really works with the interior of the building, and I would like to get a better sense of that.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things we're going to do is, we actually had a large piece of this built, like this big, to bring, and I didn't like the way it looked, the way it was built. You know, it wasn't the idea, but, so it's in the back of my car right now. But we'll make sure to have enough definition and also bring some examples of buildings that have done it, viewing from inside and out.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. We've all had a chance. So this is not a public hearing. It's a study session, but we'd like to hear from members of the public that have something to say about this. Come up one by one and, excuse me, sign into the sign-in sheet when you're done. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Steve Skar. Vicki and I have the property that Kava has been discussing on the, on the west side of the proposed project. And we did go to the community meeting, and, as you can tell, we're sort of generally unhappy with the existence of the product, project right on our, on our property anyway. But we appreciated the efforts of the architect to mitigate the impacts on us, which meant mostly putting, putting the project along Adeline Street and the parking between, between our property line and, and the large building. As Kava says...
Can I interrupt you a second? Can you identify your property? I think I'm a little bit confused. Are you the house that's really close to the building, or are you the one to the west, where the garden is?
They're the ones with the garden.
Okay.
The one with the garden.
I was thinking you were in the other building. So I was a bit confused. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. So, as Kava was indicating, we're fairly lucky in the term, in terms of the shadow Because they're a little bit to the north and, and east of us, we only get a little bit of shadow from that, that large building. And, but I, I think, from our point of view, shadow studies aren't where it's at. It's the fact that we have a massive five-story, 55-foot-tall building right in our sky. And it's going to block out most of our sky. So for that reason, we really, really resist the ideas that are floated by the planning staff to, to raise the building any higher than is already planned. And I just, this is the first we heard about this, is, is tonight. But, gosh, I would really, really, really hate to see this building go up to 75 feet. And seems like, seems like that's where we're headed. And Kava suggested that that's going to be pretty difficult for him. It's going to make us really unhappy. I don't want to put words in my neighbor's mouth, the man on Adeline Street with the other small house, but he's already got a concrete wall that's right on his property line. He's lived with that for years. Kava's proposal is going to move the wall back 10 feet from the property line and actually open up that space. But really, there's no amount of mitigation that you're going to be able to do with setbacks and so on to, to solve that problem. He's just going to be facing that wall. Now, his, his, as I say, not to put words in his mouth, his real concern was the view that he has from the back of his house, which looks over the parking lot. If you move, if you move the thing back at all from Adeline Street, that will block that view and make him even more unhappy.
That's the speaker's time. Chair Donaldson?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's really all I have to say.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
I do.
Okay. You could sign in afterwards.
So, yeah, I'm Vicki Sewell. This is, this is our homes, 3616, 3618, on Peralta Street. This is the front. This is the side view.
Please stay by the microphone, at least.
Indeed.
We do want to see those, but we want...
This is the side view.
You to be heard.
And then you get to see the side of my house and the Ambassador Affordable Housing. And across the street, you get to see Big Daddy's Community Garden. We've lived there since 1982, sort of as pioneers. We built the community garden, and we built the giant garden. We have as much space as you can see as them, and the rest is garden. We live and we work there. My studio's there. I'm a public artist. I've made much public art in Emeryville. We've tried to be good members of the community. And just imagine now that there's no house there. My property is now a five to seven-story building with many, many, probably many points for the developers to buy into, because they don't have to do anything green, they can just pay to get points. So, that's all housing now. And imagine, Big Daddy's is a giant seven, nine-story building, too. That's what I see for the future of my, where I live. So I just asked you to imagine that there's a garden there that has a beautiful morning light. Fortunately, my garden had perfect exposures all the time. It won't anymore, because this is what that building will do. There will be no eastern light for me, and probably some of the southern as soon as you put that other extension out. And he did like seeing Pack and Save, and they talked about that view if you cut him off, my other neighbor, behind me. The other thing, try to imagine me living there with that giant building, with the balconies, for me to get to look into our backyard. And then imagine that, for a long time, if you can see that green wall by my house, that's a brick wall that existed behind US Spring, and now there's a living wall there. Extends into my neighbor's property. That's how we divide our wall. It's brick, and it's been very secure. So for me, the other thing I worry about is the safety in this neighborhood now, that you're going to make me have a chain-linked fence behind there for someone to jump. Lastly, there is no such thing as the parking limit you got there. The Affordable Housing Unit, I heard it all from Ambassador. It's quite a nightmare now, the parking in my neighborhood, because the people don't have one car. They have friends that have cars, and then they have two cars. And then they don't even park in their parking spaces, and they park on the street. And it's not a safe neighborhood. Unfortunately, it's sort of being eaten alive by the homeless. It's kind of an abandoned part of town, because it's surrounded by Caltrans and West Oakland on the other side, which are kind of negligent neighbors. And Emeryville won't take response. I know, it's only my life, and I got three minutes.
Was there another neighbor that wished to speak?
My name is John Sedgwick. I'm a homeowner and resident of Adeline Place, 3801 San Pablo, which is directly north of the project. My two comments. First off, since I've been a very close witness to the fires at the Massey Building in the past year, I would be really interested in arson mitigation plans for this development. We didn't have any, our building did not have any damage at the first fire, but the second fire, we, most of the windows on the San Pablo side of the building were cracked. Most of the paints were shattered by the, by the heat. And secondly, for the units that are on the MacArthur side of our building, I'm wondering what sort of, what's going to happen to their view from their units. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Okay.
My name is Daryl Rush, and I have the building just on the other side of Adeline. I'm a contractor, and I've had that building since 1990. And I'm here about parking. I, I mean, I, we have four tenants in our building that don't have cars, and we've specifically rented to people to not, to not have cars. And I was wondering if there's any way that that could be put as a provision into the, I mean, since they're not providing parking spaces, if they could target people, and the city could enforce that, that, that they would, in their leases, have people, a certain number of people that wouldn't have cars. So, so what they're actually proposing would work, because there is no parking in the neighborhood any longer. And if that wouldn't work, there could be, we have decal for parking, and so the people in that building could not get the decal. I mean, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but the people that are there right now, I mean, unfortunately, my building has no parking whatsoever. Lane Spredders has no parking. SENS has a little bit of parking. But since the building was built at the Ambassador, they're parking on the street all of round on our side, and there's just no parking whatsoever. So anyway, that would be my, my request, if there was some kind of a covenant that could be put into the lease agreements and all that. Right. Thank you.
Could you sign into the sign-in sheet, please? Yep. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Okay. Commissioners, who would like to start a discussion?
I have plenty of comments.
Okay.
Can start. First of all, I do want to recognize that this is a difficult site. It's particularly small. It's in a neighborhood that has been neglected. And hearing the comments of the neighbors, the situation that is your concern right now is what these type of projects mitigate. These types of buildings bring more people to the neighborhood, they make more safe streets, they make more eyes on the streets. This type of development is what a city needs. We're no longer a suburban city, but we are becoming urban. That is what our general plan requires us to do. So I think the, the fact that, you know, it's neglected is, is part of what we're trying to correct with these types of projects. So it is a difficult site. I would still like to see the building, at least an idea of the building placed along MacArthur Boulevard, because then it would create an opening along Adeline Street, which is where the morning sun would come through. The building would basically front the north, so it would, I think, allow more light into the block, because it becomes a, a valley or a canyon of, of a light shed. So I, I don't think that's really the problem. It would pull it away from more people's homes that way. But if it's just not viable, it's not viable, so I just wanted to put that out there. The biggest thing we talked about tonight are the wooden battens. I'm going to have to say that, Mr. Rush, I know a lot of your work, or like a lot of your work. I've seen a lot of these battens on buildings. There's actually one on 41st Street on a, near, where you'd built some condos several years ago in Oakland. And in West Berkeley, there's a lot of buildings. The problem I foresee with these is, number one, I think it, it kind of creates a prison look for the people who live inside the buildings. I just couldn't imagine seeing out my windows and seeing those boards in the way. Additionally, I think long-term care for them, the stained wood becomes unstained, it becomes splintered, it becomes warped. So I just see these as, even though I appreciate, I like the overlap, the balconies, I think that's really creative. Like Commissioner Banta said, it's really textural, but I think there's other options, perforated metal we could look at. And I think with what you're describing to manufacture these things, with all the supports to keep them from warping, the cost has got to be pretty high on this. And I think that's a place where you guys could save some money and do something else. So I'd like to, if you guys choose to do those, that's, of course, your prerogative, but I just don't see it as an amenity to the project as much as later on down the road. My, my business is I manage buildings for University of California, and I have hundred-year-old buildings, and I see what age does to buildings. And this just doesn't look like it's going to be a friend to the building in 15 to 20 years. I would, like every project, I, I appreciate the bicycle parking, that it's covered and everything. And I, looking at the constraints of this, I would just like to, when you come back, I'd like to hear that you've at least looked at lockers. If you can't place them, just say that you've looked at it and you can't find a space. But I believe three to five lockers for residents is really important. And I think you need to definitely look at meeting the open space requirements. It's definitely going to be something that I'm not going to feel the protection to letting that be less than what we require for the city. The sidewalks need to be 12 feet. That's something that my partner and I advocate all the time, is that, you know, we need sidewalks in this city that are walkable for people. And I love the idea of the road diet and the crosswalk. I would definitely support any idea that you're going to work towards on that. Trying to be quick and succinct to give everyone a chance. The murals, I'm glad I didn't forget that. I'm not a fan of murals in general, and I think five murals in this building is too much. I would prefer to see no more than two. One is preferable. And I think for the walls that are left open, we have many options in doing green walls. I was thinking, as we were talking, you could do a sculptural-type thing that could be really well lit at night, and perhaps it could be reflective of the auto industry that used to be there. You know, something interesting with the spring, leaf springs or something like that. But I think there's many options to address that wall, that we don't just take this simple, easy way out and paint them all. I think it's a little too garish. And the proposed parking, parking is an issue throughout town. It is always going to be an issue. The way that this parking code is now written is it's to encourage less automobile reliance. I support that. This project meets our current codes, and I think the city is going to eventually be working very soon on a street parking policy that I think will, will help address these items. But it's, it's a change of paradigm, and it's going to take time for things to change, and change is uncomfortable. But I totally support anything that discourages a single-occupant vehicle, and I know as a fact that fewer parking spaces does do that job. And it's going to be a growing pain period of a time, but I think the city's working on the parking policies that will help address those things. So I'm definitely in support of what we have figured out for parking right now. And I think at this time, that's all I have.
My comments relate to the, the murals and the art and the buildings. Contrary to some of the comments made, I do believe that the murals complement and blend in with the neighboring environment. I do think that there should be some effort to blend a bit more with some of the mural, the mosaic art that I see nearby. I think that might be a nice way to, to complement what's there already. And in terms of the, the parking, as a young person who's, who I feel reflects what's coming to, to this city, I don't own a car as well and think that, agree, the parking spaces are a challenge to begin with there. But most people my age, at this point, are looking for alternative ways of transportation. So biking being the reason I mention that, having more secure spaces inside would help promote the, the use of bikes. And the outside parking for guests, I think, could be increased a bit. And three, may, may not be enough. And access to local buses being something that we can look at there to help residents that don't, that choose not to have a car. So safety crossing that street there would be something to consider at some point. Those are my comments.
Well, a lot of very interesting comments from neighbors tonight, and I just thought I'd address a couple of them. You know, the, the business of putting a big building on this corner has been one of a number of big buildings marching through the neighborhood. It is, that is the result of the zoning that supports this size building. And of course, that zoning was put in place as a result of a long general plan... And of course, that zoning was put in place as a result of a long general plan process and also as part of just the general progress of cities at trying to provide housing, which is, of course, Roland Dyer in need of. Nonetheless, you know, that doesn't, that may be little consolation to immediate neighbors. And the comments made by the neighbors immediately to the west about the impacts of the building on their property, indeed, there will be impacts, shadow impacts, you know, for a good part of the year in the morning. But fortunately, in the middle of the day and the end of the day, you're not going to have those impacts. If the building were reconfigured to have the mass of it along MacArthur, those impacts would be greater, I think, on the property. So I think that the choice of massing, it seems to me to make sense the way it is right now. The use of battens as a, as a kind of an aesthetic device, again, I think the architect's to be applauded for, you know, making the effort to make something out of the building more than what typical buildings are. There are all those considerations that he is aware of about doing it so it's done right because if it's done wrong, it really is counterproductive. And you have all those things working against you, like the wood that's going to flex and the maintenance issues over time that another commissioner has pointed out. So I think the battens are great, but I think you've got to use the right material to make them work. And in my mind, I think your batton concept would still be, still be very strong if it was interrupted at the windows, which would allow good views out the windows and allow you to open the windows as casements as well. Solve a few problems right there. There is a, there is a type of art called lenticular art. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But it's, what it involves is, it's almost like you take a canvas and you fold it into an accordion so that it has a set of ridges. And the ridges that face to the right are all painted in one particular color or with one particular image. Images and the ridges that face to, the facades that face to the left are painted with a different color, a different image. And as you walk by it, you get, the image comes into focus and changes entirely. So it makes it, it makes it a very dynamic art form. And this, in fact, is completely open to that kind of consideration. It would be something that would take a lot of effort and planning and so forth, but it would be a pretty darn interesting building if you thought to do that. The planning staff has asked us to address this issue of massing, you know, along Adeline Street and how it impacts the building immediately to the south. I think the applicant has made an effort to step down, you know, I see three steps in any case. And I think the, I think that, I mean, in order to do an additional reduction of mass without totally rearranging your floor plan, you'd end up losing another bedroom to a unit below at the very southern end. So that may not be in your pro forma, I don't know. You do, you have on your, on your, I guess this is the eastern facade, you have the facade coming out in kind of overlapping panels. And it might be that, that the very southern end, you might bring, bring a portion of the building out in another panel. It tends to help break up the mass at that end. Anyway, that's a thought, something to think about. And my opinion of the murals is that it's great if it's done, done right, but I also like the idea of green walls. Parking is, you know, I know cities love to reduce parking, and the case has been made for the ultimate effect that you have to, eventually, as a, as a group, we learn how to cope with it, but it does, it can be painful. So those are my, those are my comments.
Do you want to comment?
Okay, so a few points here. Start by highlighting just overall the artistic stab this applicant took to, for this development. I think it's a great first crack. I think you heard a lot of comments, which I won't belabor in terms of some of the specifics of how it could be improved in the second go-around, but I really laud the applicant's attempt to take an artistic stab at this and not take a cookie-cutter approach, especially given that this is a neglected part of town. It'd be great to just bring something interesting, to just change the tenor of that piece of property. So while there's a lot of improvements that are going to be made, I really just want to further encourage the developer to keep that tenor and keep, keep that artistic quality in mind. Secondly, wholeheartedly agree about, with my colleague, Commissioner Keller, about reinforcing the walkability of the area, especially given that there's so many restaurants and ground floor retail sprouting up, especially along Adeline. Adeline's becoming kind of a pseudo-restaurant row for a humble little city. And I think making that walkability to reinforce, to have the people and the eyes on the street, which will have great social effects as well, I think that should be very much encouraged. And I know that's in tension with, with fewer parking spaces that are available, but I'm uncomfortable forcing the issue to happen with this development. I think it's got to be a more comprehensive approach than that. And I really do think, in my mind, I know there's disagreement on this dice about this, is I don't think there's enough parking spaces there. And I think where that's coming from is, while I acknowledge that there needs to be, we want to encourage more walkability in this city, we also want to respect, I also want to respect the people who are already there, our neighbors and our residents who are already there. So, and I think it's easy to talk about folks who we want to attract and want to come, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable with saying people of a certain age don't drive anymore because I think that overlooks folks of different ability, different diversity, families who would just need a car to get around. Have you ever tried to take public transportation with two kids in tow, go to a grocery store, riding AC Transit? It's not really realistic for some families. So I know there's some tension here on the dice, but I think in terms of how do we creatively work out parking that meets the folks who are going to live there, but also respects the quality of life for the residents and neighbors that we have in that vicinity, I think is what we'd like to shoot for. And I'll just end with this. Just want to reinforce the point of my other colleagues on the dice, saying, just looking at the big picture here, we need this kind of development there because that's exactly what, how it's going to combat some of the detrimental things that already exist, such as the crime that's already there, things that we want to clean up. So in order for that to happen, we need to bring residents there, we need to bring a development in order to make that happen.
Sure. Yeah, I have, I also have several comments.
Overall, I did want to say that I, you know, the project as envisioned is a great start in terms of understanding what could go there and what sort of mix and what kind of building would go there. I think there is an overall need for affordable units, and I know that hasn't been spoken about a lot. And so the idea of providing additional housing in a, in a market that really needs that housing is a, is a great goal. I think, I want to echo a lot of the comments that have already been said in terms of as we, as a, you know, as a developing city, look to maintain walkability, this is a pretty intense intersection. The ability to have a good quality sidewalk, the ability to be able to cross the roads is part of the transportation reality of not having cars. And so, so that has to be kind of equally weighted as having a good walking environment, even given that the context is not suited to that. But anything that you can do to help that in terms of the sidewalk width, in terms of the crossings, I think is, is an excellent part of development of this project. I do think, and particularly hearing from the neighbors, I do think a little more attention to the solar analysis has to be done. And I've seen this a couple, couple times, is that for you, you only need three, a three-by-three matrix, but we really do need an analysis of the solar study. So where does it really impact? What are the details? So that would really help as you develop this. Also, the unit layouts, I know that's for development, but I think that will matter in terms of how that, the units are laid out, so I look forward to having that information. I do also want to add that the secured bike parking, I think, is really critical. I have a kid and I don't have a car, and, and we have lots of bikes in our house, and we won't put them anyplace because we don't have a secured place and it takes up real estate. As you have smaller units, it's a huge problem in terms of not having that real estate. So secured bike parking, we've also had our bikes stolen, so, so having something that's secured is really important. Also, planning for the overflow, people do have visitors, so really a comprehensive management plan of what happens when people show up, really to honor the neighbors and understand that management from a management perspective. I think that's critical. Also, as someone who is relatively new to this community, there are all sorts of things you can do in terms of transit and traffic demand management, you know, giving new people clipper cards or, or looking at the timing of the parking or making sure that people can get their kids to school, giving them information as to where buses are, how to get to transit. These are all key components that have to be really well orchestrated and thought out. I would also add the murals, given that we just have a cultural capital designation, I think murals can be great, but the question about the quality of them is an important one. And also, how does that support the community? How can you make it an activity that maybe involves people, maybe starts a business? There are some components there that I think you can work with. So those are some of the key large comments. I had a couple building-specific comments. The, I think people have talked about the southern, other commissioners have talked about the southern side and that question of massing. I think the Adeline Street frontage is effective in terms of the massing. I'm a little concerned about the back corner, which doesn't come down. That still may be a big four-story, non-windowed wall to the southern neighbor, so I'd say take a look at that again. The community room is a strange space to me. It's very, very small. I'm not sure that it's usable, but yet I like the idea that there would be a community space. And then also, I felt as though the MacArthur facade didn't quite get as much attention, so perhaps looking at that and looking at the articulation of the massing on that side. The orientation I'm okay with, but I think it's also related to the, to the solar study. So I'd encourage you to, to look at that as that develops. And then the only thing I wanted to do was to say one thing about the, the batton idea. I too think that it's a really interesting take. I like the way, that sort of level of articulation. I also am concerned about construction quality, maintenance, love to understand how that would really work. Also, there may be a reality around color and having the background windows needing more window if you're putting, you know, a batton in front of the window. So those are all things that I think you'll just, you will need more detail about. So other than that, those are some of my comments, and overall, you know, great start, some really good things to work with here.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of the comments of other commissioners. I would, I think that real attention needs to be given to stepping back the massing a little bit rather than overhanging and increasing the massing around the building from the floor plate up to the next levels because it really does impact the surrounding properties to have things moving closer as they get higher. The solar study, I mean, I was interested to see that it didn't impact very much except for the morning in a couple, some of the times of year, but otherwise that it didn't create that much of a difference. But I think that it does need to be looked at more. And I also really appreciate the comments about what it does to the neighbors' skyline, so having at least a look at it stepping back at the higher levels so it doesn't cut up so much of the sky. I mean, I'm addressing that every day with the buildings of the transit center going up and the parking lot that's going up. My sky gets smaller and smaller all the time, and I understand that as an issue. The live-work spaces at the bottom, I'm just wondering whether those could be looked at a little bit more as some kind of alternative uses and whether it's for secured bicycle parking, for whether, whether it's for an enlarged community area, or whether it's working out some way to put some additional parking in there. I think it would be really a good thing to look at that ground floor and how it's working. I have a real problem. I think we have a conflict between trying to get family-friendly housing with three-bedroom units and saying, and you don't have any place to park your car. I think it's a real problem, and it's an increasing problem in the neighborhood, so I have a real difficult time. And I know that it's been done to the regulations that we have, but it's like taking the minimum amount of parking and cutting it in half just does not seem realistic to me. Those are my main concerns. I think that Commissioner Banta's comments about looking at the batton away from the windows or having some alternative to that because I think that there will be maintenance issues, and it also does make it look sort of hemmed in and sort of, I have real concerns about what it looks like from the inside if you're trying to look out your windows and you have these boards marching along the front of your windows. I think that the treatment of the balconies on the front corner are interesting. And maybe the solar study and looking at the property from different angles so that we understand the massing and what it does to the property at the west would be a really a useful thing to have the next time we see that. So that was, as far as the murals go, I can see them being used in a limited way. I don't think that it makes sense to put them on the southern wall because they are something that neighbors are going to be looking out their window at all the time. Also, I think that if those small houses transitioned, you'd have a mural against a big wall on the other side anyway. I appreciated Ms. Sol's comments about bonus points being done with greening of the building. I think that looking at more greening, energy efficiency, solar, solar features would be a good thing as well. So that's my comments at this time. In terms of amenities that might be added, we need to see if we're having family-friendly places. We need to see some kind of flexible play space for kids that we would hope would be living there.
Does anyone have any?
Chair Donaldson?
Yeah.
If I could just make one comment with regard to this, the last comment you just made concerning the bonus points and the community benefits. The way our code is written currently, in order to receive community benefits, they would have to choose from among the six categories that are listed, plus the flexible community benefit. Unfortunately, the addition of greening the building or solar panels or whatever is not currently on the list. The only energy-efficient measure that is on the list is zero net energy, and that means the entire building has to have zero, be designed for zero net energy. They could propose what's called a flexible community benefit, which would cover solar panels and other things like that, since the flexible community benefit covers anything that's not on the list. However, that would trigger city council approval of the project. So that's just to clarify what our code says now.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have one more comment I've forgotten to mention. I'd also just like to see more details when you come back on the trash collection and the storage of that. That's a real pet peeve of mine is I don't want to see those things hanging out on the street for people to go picking through while they're waiting for pickup and et cetera. And it looks like a fairly small enclosure. That means that the things have to be drug out to the sidewalk, and I don't know if the trash collecting company does that or if the residents have to bring, not the resident, but the property manager does it. So just need to see more details addressing the trash collection.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask some clarifying questions?
Sure.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Ali Kashani. My partner, Joe Blums, here. I appreciate all your thoughtful comments regarding parking and battens and bulk. The staff has asked you specifically to comment on three, and you have done pretty well on all. But one of the questions they have asked is, we propose to pay for your, to your small business fund to meet the other 50 points, and that actually ties into amenities and community benefits. and community benefits. Uh, we would appreciate if you could share with us your thoughts about how to do that. I just heard Commissioner Donaldson mention something about amenities for families. Um, while your, I commend you for your zoning ordinance that tries to create, uh, usable space for families in projects. I've built those before. I'm very familiar with them. This site is really too small to, uh, meet all of that, so we're challenged by the physical, the physi- the physical constraints of this site. Um, we don't have a large podium or large play areas for kids to design, to put a play structure, for example. So, we would appreciate your thoughts on how, what you think we could do to meet those amenities for families. We have four three-bedrooms in this project, uh, 11 two-bedrooms, 11 ones, and three studios. Um, so the four, so the four three-bedrooms will have four families, um, you know, potentially, you know, eight to 12 kids on the property. So, we like to, uh, we, we'd appreciate your thoughts on, on, on that.
Do you have thoughts on that?
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, I, I, I think, um, this is true of most small sites, uh, is that space is, is at a real premium and a constraint. Um, and I would say in an urban condition, uh, it is important to think about where the nearest park is.
Right.
Um, and how you get there. Uh, because, uh, you know, I certainly have those same issues, uh, having a child in the city. Uh, we do select places that are near parks, uh, where we choose to live or places where I can hop on a bus and get to a park or walk within a couple miles. Um, so, so I think that's an element that you can add in your package, is you can, you can begin to look at the region.
Sure.
Talk about the mechanics of how someone would get to one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, I think, is the starting point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then I think I would welcome other people's comments about, in terms of what could be done on site as well, um, because, uh, usually a super tiny space that isn't usable isn't that useful. Um, and so I don't know sort of what, what other commissioners might think in terms of threshold of space or, or creative ideas around space.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that there are a lot of alternatives to a traditional play structure that are just more, that's why I said flexible play space. There are things that can be designed sort of creatively that kids can, um, use their imagination and find ways to use movable things and things that don't have to be built into the, the space itself, so providing space that's flexible enough that it could be used in various ways by kids of different ages is important.
So, like some amenities inside the community room for kids, um, that could be considered, um, not, not space that's outdoors. We don't really have outdoor space for kids in this project.
Well, you've got that, your roof deck, which is pretty ample in size.
Mm-hmm.
And the only issue with that, of course, is parents getting worried about their kids climbing over the railing.
Right.
So, you'd have to design that.
Sure.
Prevent against that, but you, also if you design it in a way where it's easy for the parents to lounge around while their kids are playing.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe have some, uh, way where they can, you know, recharge their phones or computers or whatever. And then, of course, you're going to want to put a platform and a little faucet in so for the older kids can drop water balloons on the.
Yeah, you bet, you build landscaping before the wall so they can't get to it. Right, right. If, if I may ask one more question? Um, we all have heard this inherent tension between, um, the paradigm shift that's happening with, you know, our lifestyles are changing from car, ridership to other alternative, alternative modes of transportation. And we, we know that, and in this project, the 15 spaces, it's not like we're not providing any parking. We have 15 spaces for, for families, so the families will have parking spaces. Um, but as the staff has, um, mentioned, a transportation demand management study needs to be done, or we go and do, get this project as green-rated. And one of the projects we did is we, we offered, for a parking reduction, we offered residents free bus passes, clipper cards, as you mentioned. Um, that, to some extent, addresses that tension, um, that people will know that if, once they move into this project, they have a benefit of receiving from the landlord, uh, clipper cards. So, we would look at that as we go through this process and we'll come back to you and let you know what, what we, we can propose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Our next agenda study session item is the Doyle Street Muse. Thank you very much.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we can take it. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 8:34. 8:34.
It's your show. Well, thank you. Good evening, listeners. So, I'll be, uh, presenting tonight on Doyle Street Muse over on Doyle Street. So, here's the location we're talking about. 59th Street is to the north, Powell Street's to the south. So, project overview, this is to demolish four existing, uh, legal units and two legal units. Uh, because it includes a demolition of residential units, this requires city council approval, and the proposal is to replace it with six new units, all of which have three bedrooms. So, for background, this originally came to Planning Commission for a study session back in April of 2016. At that time, there were questions about the feasibility of obtaining 50 bonus points which are needed for this project, uh, through the use of zero net energy, uh, on the, on the site. Uh, there are also concerns raised about existing trees, the north and east sides of the property, and, um, in general, the unit and project design feedback was provided. It came back again to the Planning Commission August of 2016, and at this point, uh, the applicant revised her proposal in response to concerns about net zero not being feasible. So, uh, the proposal at that time was for 50 bonus points for family friend, family-friendly unit design, as well as 50 bonus points supporting citywide small business funds. Uh, the Planning Commission, uh, supported, uh, those concepts and, or that proposal rather, rather, and there were concerns still about, uh, potential impacts of the redwood tree, which is on the north side, uh, across the property line, and also additional unit and project design feedback. This also went to city council for a study session in November 2016. They were generally supportive of the project. The, um, issues they raised and concerns were design and materials at that time, preservation of the redwood tree again, and, uh, the council deferred back to, uh, Planning Commission for advice and direction on those issues. So, here we are again today. There is a new architect on the project, uh, Baron Studios. They also, uh, have a presentation for you this evening. Um, materials, building design, and articulation have all changed. I do have a new materials board. I'm not passing it around because it's kind of heavy, but let me know if you would like to interact with it, and we'll make sure that happens in a safe manner. So, in addition, uh, unit design has been changed significantly. Uh, previously, stairs along the front unit were located between the windows and the living spaces. That's been flipped. Um, there's also more family-friendly design details and a pier-on-grade foundation for Unit Three, which is the northern building, easternmost unit, uh, has been designed in response to the concerns about the redwood tree. Also, landscaping and open spaces have been revised and additional information has been provided on those spaces. So, here's some existing, uh, photos of the site. And here's proposed development. So, here's a site plan zoomed in a little bit. I lost my cursor. There we go. And something that came up before was, uh, the design of, uh, trash enclosures, and those are located the very front of the property. The applicant has been working with Marcy Greenhut and Public Works to make sure that they're adequately sized and located so that they can, uh, be picked up properly from waste management. And here's the plan that they submitted. Uh, Marcy's reviewed this plan and, uh, feels that it meets all regulations and requirements for that. So, uh, what we have here, it's a little bit hard to see on the screen. This is the anticipated location that the garbage truck would pull up, and, uh, this is the path of travel to get to the, uh, three types of waste streams on either side, which are enclosures in front of the buildings. So, site plan for landscaping is here. Yeah, there's a lot more details than before. Uh, we do have, uh, uh, water-efficient landscaping ordinance here, so, um, this plan appears to comply with that. Some more details will be provided in the future to make sure that all the measurements for that, uh, pencil out. And, uh, here is, uh, the tree on the north side of the property. So, this thicker line here is the property line, and then there's kind of this jagged line representing the redwood tree. And then, what this is showing, the dark green is redwood tree, um, primary root plate. So, if you cut into the roots in that area, it can compromise the structural stability of the tree itself. And then the larger, lighter green circle is representing where there could actually be tree roots to that ex, full extent of that area. Most of that area is paved over right now, so it's not known for sure exactly where they are, but this is, uh, there was an Arborist report attached, included in your report here that discussed this, and the Arborist came to the, the last study session for Planning Commission as well to discuss the details of this. So, as you can see, the, um, north-eastern unit here, the outline of it overlaps with that redwood tree zone. So, that now has a pier-on-grade foundation, so that's raised up. It's not level with the ground, and there is some more flexibility in where you can actually put the supports that way to avoid the tree roots. So, here's rendering from the west side from Doyle Street. We're just going to go around the building right now. This is the backside. This would be facing the neighbors to the rear. This is the north facade, so, um, there'd be the redwood tree, uh, over to the left here on the side of the property, of the neighbor's property, rather. The south facade here. And then here, there's a driveway in the middle, if you haven't noticed that already, and this would be the north building if you're like in the south building looking across. This is what you would see. And then if, flip from that, if you're facing south, if you were in the north building looking across the driveway. And here we are facing, uh, north again, so, uh, where my cursor is, is where the trash enclosures are and entryways here to the unit, the front unit. If you were to walk into the property now, going into that center driveway, uh, you're looking back at the rear of the property here, and this is the northern building, and the southern building is on the right side of this image. This would be Unit One, so this is the frontmost unit. You're in the driveway right now, but looking at the, um, Unit One. And this would be looking out in the background here would be Doyle Street, and this is Unit Three, I believe. Is that correct?
Four.
Is that Unit Three?
Four.
My apologies. I got that backwards, so that's mislabeled. I apologize. And here's the common space, uh, that's proposed in the rear, so, um, where this green is, that would actually be looking across Doyle Street there. There's the common. There's the common driveway, and then back there's common open space. And this would be the north building here. So the unit design of the first floor has been revised, as I mentioned earlier. There's parking for the first two units. And then back here, Unit 3, this is the pier on grade, so there's actually a few steps up into that building. The stairwell has been relocated instead of being directly at the front of these units along Doyle Street. You now enter towards the back of the unit. When you go upstairs to the second unit, there's open space for each unit on this floors in the form of a deck. And the stairwells are not between the windows in the front and the living spaces. And on the third floor of all the units is where you have bedrooms. And the rear unit steps back in response to both Planning Commission and neighbor concerns about having too much bulk at the rear of the property, having it step down towards the rear of the property. So for zoning, this is in the mixed-use residential zone. So because it's a site of less than one acre, a mix of uses is not required. It's also in the north hollows overlay, so this doesn't modify any permitted uses in any way. For zoning, they're going over the base for proposed, go over the base for floor area ratio as well as residential density. So this requires the full 100 bonus points. There's no bonus for height. They're at 30 feet, which is the maximum in this area. For parking, their permitted parking range is five to eight spaces. They're proposing six, one for each unit. And for bicycle parking, they're required to have a minimum of seven spaces. They're showing areas designated within each unit for bike parking. We just need some more details on that to verify the feasibility of it, but it's looking good. And they also have the shared guest parking at the back of the property, so there will be exceeding the bicycle parking requirement. For setbacks in the MUR zone, there's no side or front setbacks required. And there's a 10-foot rear setback required because it abuts the RM zone. They exceed that by about an additional 10 feet. And the north hollows overlay, you're required to have 15 feet of landscaping and sidewalk from the face of the curb to the building face. And I believe it's about 19 feet, so that's exceeded as well. For open space, this application is well over that 40 square feet of private open space per unit. There's multiple decks and private open spaces on the ground floor as well for each unit. And the common open space is well over a cumulative 120 square feet. For landscaping, there's a minimum requirement of 10% of site area, which would be approximately 1,000 square feet. The applicant proposes over 2,000 square feet of landscaping. For street trees and utility wires, there's currently no street trees. So staff is recommending that there's a requirement for street trees at every 25-feet interval, that there's 3 1/2 foot of planting strip to accommodate root growth, and also to underground all the utilities at this site. So this would help provide some continuity across the street. There is very well-established street trees, so it'd help match that. For the community benefit options, I mentioned this earlier. The applicant is now moving forward with additional family-friendly units, which would be 100% in this case, and contributing to the small business fund. So this slide describes the family-friendly unit situation. So there's a requirement for 50% of units to be family-friendly and have two or more bedrooms. But that doesn't apply to developments with fewer than 10 units. So their maximum of 50 bonus points, five points for each additional 5% of the units. For having 50% of the units being family-friendly, they'll get that. And then the applicant proposes all units be family-friendly, earning the maximum 50 bonus points, and also to have all units be three bedrooms. So required findings for this project. There's findings for development bonuses in the MUR zone for demolition of residential units. There's required findings to replace all of those units. And there's also required findings for design review. This went to DCC, the Development Coordinating Committee meeting in July. And staff comments at that time were, as we mentioned, new curb, gutter, sidewalk, street trees, underground utilities. Following up with the Arborist, just to make sure, it mentions in the Arborist report that branches would need to be trimmed to accommodate the 30-foot height of the proposed building, but it doesn't say if that would impact the tree or not. So just to clarify that with the Arborist. The redesign of the units to be more family-friendly and relocating the stairwells is very much appreciated, but the trade-off for that was reducing the visual interest on the ground floor. So staff was hoping that they could provide some revisions to that. Staff also suggested possibly considering adding EV charging stations, and that more details are needed for things such as where the mailboxes will be addressing these sorts of things, day-to-day practicalities that need to be addressed. So issues for you to consider tonight are the design. Does the commission have any feedback regarding the design of the overall project, landscaping or unit design? There are significant changes from the previous proposal. Findings, does the commission feel that they would be able to make the required findings for design review, a conditional use permit, and bonus points to approve this project? And in general, does the commission feel the applicant has adequately addressed the concerns expressed and responded to the feedback provided at previous Planning Commission and city council study sessions? The next steps for this project, because it does involve the demolition of residential units, would be to go to a city council study session, a Planning Commission, come back to Planning Commission for recommendation, and then go back to city council for approval. So the applicants also have a presentation for you this evening.
Any questions for staff?
Are there any inhabitants in the illegal units that need to be demolished?
I don't believe so at this time. I don't know if the architect knows.
Do you want to?
Nobody lives in here.
So our understanding from the crowd is that there's no one currently living there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're talking about undergrounding the utilities in front of the project. Is that a requirement, or is that something that we're requesting of the project?
That would be required as part of this project because the front of the building would have to be significantly, not, pardon, not the front of the building, but the front of the property and the public right of it would require so many significant changes to do this as part of that process. It's required for many projects for their facade.
Very good. Thanks.
Navarre, Unit 1 and Unit 4 are accessible units. Are those required to be accessible, or is that something that the applicant is doing out of the goodness of their heart?
That's a building requirement. They could probably speak better to that than I could. They've met with building about this project to make sure that it's meeting many requirements, not just accessibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions of Navarre? Okay, the applicant here to come up and present?
There's also one more slide after that.
Yeah, we can, I can start there.
Wherever you like.
I mean, mostly I should come.
Yeah, I would just use this area.
Make sure I have this under control.
Good luck.
So, good evening. I'm Matt Barron with Barron Studio. Thank you for being here to help us get this all sorted out. It is our third study session, so hopefully we can get through it and get to some of the final review that we're hoping to achieve. I'm here with Maya Salehi from my office, and we're representing the owners who are not present this evening, so hopefully we can answer any questions you might have. You know, I, I'm not sure. There we go. I guess that's the last slide. I can start here. I really wanted to talk in a broader sense. I mean, we did inherit this project, and you have seen it in different iterations. For the most part, it is a new design. But some of the major kind of planning and layout moves remain. It's still two buildings. There's still a road down the street, or a street down the middle. And I think that, you know, there are only so many ways you can kind of configure a site such as this. So we maintained a lot of that overall effort, but we looked at a lot of the details. We sat through a lot of study session comments and listened to everything that was said. We met with commissioners. We met with neighbors to hear what their concerns were and tried to get all this addressed within a reasonable framework that allowed the project to still work as six units and, you know, be what we're hoping for it to be, which is, you know, a family-friendly design. This slide, in fact, is showing some of the adjustments we've made since we've submitted the drawings that you've all seen. Primarily, this was to articulate the street front a little bit further. And some of the other changes that we made were, there were some concerns about the articulation of the skin, so we've kind of accommodated drainage and things of that nature by turning some of these spaces more into trellises and extensions out over the decks rather than these masses that didn't necessarily have any function. I think that Navarre did a great job of talking about the project, so I don't know how much detail I need to go into. I think I'll try to be brief, and then if there are questions that you have, I'll let you ask them. But, you know, in general, we had some concerns come up about the sustainability or the kind of general plan and green nature of the project. And I think that, you know, as many projects in Emeryville, it is green by its nature. I mean, Emeryville is a very walkable city. This is a very walkable site, bikeable site. We did a lot of things that are smaller details, like the bicycle parking and the pervious pavers and drought-resistant landscaping and things of that nature. But just by its very siting and site location and density, it has a certain amount of sustainable features built into it. As far as the design goes, you know, we, I don't really want to compare it to the previous design, but we, it's a sort of unique situation in that we're working from what was there in the previous design and trying to address comments that were made on that project, but you in many ways have a new project. So what we're trying to do was get away from the kind of mass and bulk that was present in the previous iteration. And it was this kind of, for lack of a better term, architectural laziness of just saying, "Let's mirror this because we have the street down the middle." And I think what we were trying to do was maybe break this up into a little bit more of a neighborhood scale and through the use of form and, you know, formal moves and material moves, bring this down to a scale that was maybe more in keeping with what's around it, but also not have it look like one singular massive development, but maybe a development that was related to itself and the context. And so certain aspects were mirrored because it made sense to have mirroring when there's a street down the middle and the entries fell to the outside and the cars came down through the middle. But other aspects, we tried to copy like the decks so that they would be oriented to the sun. We also tried to step down a little bit to the neighboring properties, which was a challenge because to get the three floors in 30 feet isn't much. So we were hitting that pretty consistently. But there are some parapets that we brought in to sort of give that impression. The other thing is that we did adjust some of the plans, as was discussed, and I, oops, I've gone the wrong way. Sorry. So we did adjust the unit arrangement so that they were, for one, the entire project got smaller. We discovered some miscalculations in FAR, so the project did shrink a bit from the last time you've seen it. We moved circulation around. We tried to get more light and air into the units. And as part of the shrinking of the overall size of the project, the deck spaces increased. So there's more, there are larger decks off the living spaces. There's more deck to the rear of the project. And I think that some of the other things that we did, that are probably, should be pointed out was, we did speak with the neighbors, albeit very recently. And so we did agree to sort of shorten some of the parapets. We discussed the brick building that's adjacent. So we promised that we would not build a fence against that brick wall, and we would shore it up as, you know, need be to make sure that there was no damage done to it. We also discussed the type of fence and that there would be a new fence to the rear property. As was discussed, the building steps down now to the rear of the property to address the smaller scale at the homes that are at the back there. I think that's about it, so I'll open it up if you have questions.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Nobody? I do.
Okay.
Okay. So, Matt, got a couple of questions for you. Units, Unit 1 and Unit 4, they're adaptable units, right?
Yes.
And so, does that mean that all the door swing clearances have to be wheelchair, conforming to wheelchair criteria?
Yes.
So do you see some variances with what those clearances might be required in those units on the ground floor?
I would have to run through and make sure that they were all, I haven't.
I mean, it's a minor point, but it would affect your floor plans.
Fair enough. I understand. And that can be something we look at. I mean, I think there's still a few details that we'd like to tune up, including the amount of space for bike parking, and we can look at that as well.
Right out in front of Unit 4, when you've got this private open space, which is, I think it's, is it, is it pavers or concrete, or what is that?
I think at the moment, we're calling it pavers. Is that?
Pavers. Okay. So you're putting it there on the west side, probably get some pretty nice light.
That's the hope.
And, and, yeah. And then you have a fence, which is, how high is that? Like four feet?
Less, actually. Three.
Three feet? Okay. Great. The elevations, I got some questions for you on that. Sheet A 3.0. So if you look at the top elevation on the west that's facing the street, you've got a slope on the southern building for the one unit up there. And then you've got a parapet on the northern building that I'm assuming is also sloped. Is that correct?
Yeah, you can see it better in that rendering, I think, but.
And are those, are you having those as parapet walls in order to maintain some kind of minimum or maximum roof height as opposed to having sloped roofs, or that was just?
I would, you know, the original drawings were sloped roofs, and that was the hope. But because of the, you know, what the thought was originally was to do a master bedroom that was taller and then step down to a lower ceiling on those other bedrooms. But given the constraints, particularly, we didn't talk much about it, but the rear units have a different, the one corner rear unit, 3, I believe, has a different floor to ceiling height because we're cutting out 18 inches because of the roots of the trees. So there's some challenges to get, you know, what we would consider standard floor to ceiling heights in there. So we're at 30 feet, and there was no way to really go up at all from there. But it seemed like there was an opportunity to do so because you're at the center of the site and it's not impacting those neighbors. But it sort of functions now as something that we were thinking it might be a screen for any PV that came in at a later date.
All right. So those two master bedroom sort of masses right there have adjacent to them horizontal panels that are in the same plane that kind of look like they're balconies, but they're not really, are they?
They're not. They're just really, I'm trying, I was trying to add depth to that elevation, and so there were some questions that had come up about drainage and things of that nature. So we're kind of treating it like a second skin where a rain screen, where you would actually have, water would pass behind it, and you wouldn't have to worry about sealing it in and draining it, things of that nature. But it also becomes kind of a overhang to the deck and provides some shade.
On Sheet A 3.1, you show the interior street, interior driveway elevations, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Right. So let's see, on drawing number one, north on the left-hand side, you've got the unit, I don't know which unit that is, but the parapet pops up about three feet.
That's the one we've agreed to lower, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's the, that's not the interior.
Right, that's the exterior wall facing the neighbors on that drawing one.
Right. And then drawing two has this similar pop-up. And then drawing 2 has this similar pop-up in the unit across.
Right.
And I think that carries into your...
I mean, again, this was more in effort to sort of articulate these elevations, so they weren't kind of one thing, but...
That's what I figured, that's what I wanted to understand. And then the material that you have, the, that looks like wood?
Yeah.
On the, in the base of the building that kind of wraps around it?
Yeah.
Is it a, is it, does it, is it, what is it? Is it photographic wood? Is it real wood? Does it have texture?
It's intended to be real wood at the moment. That's just white cedar there.
So it would be, your drawings show a nice kind of horizontal, almost like ribbing, but that wouldn't really be the case. That would be more like horizontal, just wood strands of wood.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's maybe reading some way in the rendering that isn't quite true, but I think that the idea was that it would be, you know, what we've been using in the past is essentially the similar profile to what you see in this. So when these interlock, they give you a very kind of clean, square reveal as opposed to a lap.
Oh, I see. And so the planning staff has made comments about how this ground floor is a little bereft of activity. Do you have any ideas about?
Well, I mean...
That want to address that, or do you think you need to address it?
The only thing that, the only thing that we were looking at was this last image where, you know, a lot of this is taking up, taken up by, and, you know, these are a little, they're not the beautiful renderings that Maya did on the other earlier work, but we were kind of trying to put something together for the meeting. But, you know, we added a window that is essentially going into the garage. A big portion of this is the trash and recycling.
Right.
And the rest is, you know, will be landscaped, and the hope would be people will actually use those porches, you know?
So that horizontal window was an addition?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, just had a, I actually, thank you for answering the question about what the most recent ground floor was, because I was thinking it was that, and I'm seeing like a lot of things, so great, because that was one of my questions. The other thing is you mentioned light and air a bit. I didn't really see it articulated in the drawings. Can you elaborate a little bit on thinking?
Well, you know, one of the comments that we had heard in the previous study sessions was that there was an appreciation for the larger windows. I think that we, as much as possible, tried to bring in large windows and get as much, you know, light and operation as we could to bring in air. But what you see here is essentially the result of, you know, maybe three things. One, the sort of function of the window, so, you know, some places you have a kitchen or, you know, maybe there's a privacy issue or a bathroom and a shower. So if it isn't a full-height window, it's typically because of a functional requirement. And then there was some discussion about family-friendly requirements as well that these were responding to. So it's more programmatic and require, you know, requirements that are, we're trying, we were trying to follow. I don't know if that answers.
I think, I think so. I mean, I just really wanted you to elaborate on it because it was mentioned and I...
And the other thing that I was, I kind of think about when I said that is that this floor plan, and I know it's, I'm not here to talk about what the project isn't, I'm here to talk about what it is, but when we originally inherited this, the stairs were at the front, and it is germane because we're a continuation of that. The stairs were at the front of the property, and you kind of had this condition where the windows were being obstructed by the stair and you couldn't get up to the window. So we flipped the unit, at least in terms of the stair, so that now the windows are on the front and the balconies are on the front, and the stair is pushed to the back of that forward unit, so you, we're hoping it'll bring a little more openness.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? Three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've lived there for 37 years, so pretty familiar with the place. You know, with respect to that tree, I don't think you really, well, first of all, that tree is not on this property. I don't even know how you can regulate it, because it's, if that guy next door decided he wanted to cut it down, there's nothing to stop him from doing that. But that tree is going to grow to twice its size. It's three times the size as it was when they first moved here. I mean, you have tons and tons of leaves pouring down from that thing every day. I would say that whole area is going to be in the shade, because that thing's going to go twice its size. I don't know who's going to go out there and trim it. And it's a big problem. That's a real fire hazard. Those pine needles are dry, really dry. And so, I mean, I've often thought about getting the guy next door to help pay for moving these leaves, because you've got to shovel tons of leaves. If you go in the yard next door, it's nothing but leaves, you just, you know. So I just think it's a fire hazard. It should be, all the gutters are always spool. You can't, you can't have any gutters that have anything, any space in them. So, you know, the wall is cracking back there right now from the tree, so it's going to probably extend over the tropic. I mean, at one, some point, it's going to outgrow the area that it's in, because you've got two trees in your, as one. It's just a huge, huge tree. I really think undergrounding utilities is really stretching for this property. Doesn't, you know, it's just, I mean, that's a big expense. I don't know how that's going to factor into the cost equation, but every property that's renovated has an undergrounded utilities, I mean, and the one on Park on Powell we put in, there were no lights in the street, no streetlights. It's dark over there. So that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing no comments. Commissioner comments? Direction to the applicants?
Sure, I'll start. Yeah, I think, I think overall, I do want to say that the townhome configuration is a really nice configuration. It does provide an efficiency in terms of the density, the efficiency of the shared driveway is nice. So there are a lot of elements that are really great about this project. You know, I still look at that frontage, and it bugs me. And I think the question is, is more, I mean, I don't have a great solution for you, and so this is, this is sort of that question of just thinking about the mechanics of the trashcans and the balcony and the driveway and the, and the garage. And that, you know, these are all sort of hard elements to orchestrate in a way because the trashcans and the garage are more service-oriented elements, but your front door and your balcony are more street frontage elements. And so you're trying to balance these, these two things. And so the only question I would have is, is really about the trashcans and whether they can be screened enough or whether they can be desirable enough underneath the balcony so as to not impact the things that are working quite well in terms of the entry in the balcony. So I still have a little concern there about that. I see that you're trying to address it. I'm not sure that it's fully addressed. So I think that was my, just sort of some comments on that. The unit sizes are large, you know, and I'm just sort of even looking at the previous project. They're spacious and they're, they are family-friendly. They, I think they're going to be expensive and lovely, but, so, and I think that's, I think that's a good thing, but, but I think for the commission, it's sort of something to think about in terms of housing balance, but I don't think your project can necessarily answer that question. I think I'm going to, I think a comment about bike parking is the same as the previous project of that question of secured bike parking. My bike was stolen from Park on Powell, so not too far away. And that was like in a locked container area. So, so I see that you have the bike parking there. I see that, I think it's great in terms of having the outdoor space, in terms of having it in the back. That's all great. I know you're going to work on locations in the units, is that what you said?
Sorry.
You have to come up to the microphone if you're going to respond.
There is secure bike parking inside.
Okay.
It's there in the, let's see, yeah, you can see it at the entry there on the front units and in the garage there. There's kind of a pocket that's carved out.
Okay, great, great. Yep.
So what I was, so they have shown the inside secure bike parking area. What they haven't provided yet are the dimensions for those areas.
Okay.
So they just need to show that it complies with our code requirements for dimensions, but other than that, it is all there. The bike parking in the rear does not meet our dimensional requirements, so that's just going to have to be revised, but there's still room for it, and that's designed to be temporary guest parking, and that's partly why it's screened as well.
Okay, okay. No, that answered some questions too, thanks. And then, yeah, I mean, I think, I think all of the other elements are looking good, and you've addressed things like the underground utilities, like the streetscaping. So I do also just, I did want to just say that the massing and the articulation and the materials are quite attractive, and so appreciate the effort that's gone into that.
I'll keep you brief. I think it's great. I think by the time this third study came around, you, we really nipped and tucked everywhere we could. I'll just say it's, everything about it, really, the color scheme, the makeup of it, the subtle incongruency of the two halves, I think it's very sophisticated. It's a great job.
You're due?
Let's see, I think I missed one of these study sessions, but probably that's why it's so good right now. But the last addition of this, I remember, was the prior, prior design effort by the, by a different architect, and I think this is really infinitely better. I think the, you know, at the back units that, where you've stepped back for the neighbors and for getting more air and light back there, I think that's really very nice. I think that the, you know, your manipulation of the volumes, really, you've just got tremendous visual activity going on, on every elevation. I think it's terrific. But I'm wondering, I don't know if you only have like, if you're only allowed to put so many colors per project on your, on your, each project that you do, but I feel like we're, if you, if you have another color in your repertoire, you might consider adding it to this instead of just, the one reason is that you have all this tremendous variation of volumes going on, but the, the constant blue color up front, it sort of buries that, the different volumes and their positions. Everything looks like it's flattened out, is what I'm trying to say. And I like, I like, I really like the wood. You know, you've done a lot of really nice projects using this kind of wood treatment, so I think that'll, that'll be, I think this front street will be very successful. You have the open space for Units 1 and 4, I think it is, if I remember, like, front units there on Doyle, right on, facing onto the sidewalk into Doyle. And I don't know if you used to have a garden gate there or not, but you might consider that for those units, just as a way to keep, you know, kids or dogs out of those yards if people want to keep their lawn furniture there and have it there when they come back at the end of the day. I, you know, I asked you about the sloped parapet roofs, and I'm not sure, you know, if this is an aesthetic choice on your part or if you feel that you could, or if you could technically put sloped roofs on there, but to me, it would seem like a, like a good thing to do for those volumes. That would be my little opinion. And the, you know, you have the living spaces for the front units with decks on the second level, and they're recessed and they have the volumes hanging out over them so they get nice, nice sun shade from the western sun. But the windows above, they would, they could also profit from some kind of sun shading potentially, if that's in your budget. So those are my comments. I think you've done a really good job.
I find myself really drawn to this, the aesthetics of this project. I think that you also, as most of the, my colleagues said, did a great job with this. I do have some concerns with the roots of the trees. It seems like, like thinking long-term, that would be something that I, you know, I don't, I'm not an arborist, and we've had a study on this, I see, but just thinking more long-term, that's a concern that I have in that side of the building. I do appreciate your emphasis on sustainability a lot, and so the idea that this is located on a bicycle boulevard and you've made some accommodations for that, I appreciate. And I also would like to learn more about the EV charging stations in the parking spots. I think that would be something that people are really drawn to there. And then, of course, thinking long-term, that, that would come in handy for the direction that things are going with vehicles too. So, thank you.
All righty, I'm pretty much on par with my fellow commissioners. I do have to politely disagree with Commissioner Banta. Is the one thing I have been striving for on this commission is to get rid of the tri-colored, quad-colored units that's, that we were plagued with for so many years. I really like the balance of colors here. The articulation, I think, is really good. A lot of times, I think, as we discussed, it's, it's used in place of good architecture, but here you guys have used it appropriately and with intent, and I think it looks really good. I like the, the colors. I don't usually like blue houses, but seen a lot more buildings today done in really dark, rich colors, and I think the blue here with the white alcoves for the doors or the white ceilings in the balcony patio areas to reflect, and I think that was really, really well done. The light wood contrast, I think, is just very, very, very well done, so I'm very happy with what, what you've shown here. I was going to have some pictures brought up, but I think we've all seen them and such, but I'm looking at kind of the, the really rendering of the children playing in the motor court. And to me, this, with the balconies that are open with the railings looking out, it's Slide A 5.4, A 5.4. That one. I just really think this almost evokes a neighborhood plaza or something that, and with this balcony that is open-rail then overlooking that area, it really kind of ties the community together, and I think because there's only security, you're not going to get a lot of cars in and out, so I think this is a true viable play space for kids that is not normally seen in a lot of, like, the first project we saw this evening, that parking lot is a parking lot. It's, you know, I can't see kids playing in that. This, I could see kids playing in, I could see adults bringing out a chair, hanging out here while their kids are there. So I think that's just, just really a good job. And the, there's so much glass, I mean, I just really, really appreciate that. As you're looking at the people standing in the second-story window, you can really get a sense of how big those windows are. And as a person living in a place with big windows, it's, it's such an asset that if you don't have it, you don't know really what it's like. And I see so many of these complexes like this built with little tiny windows, little tiny windows, and it's just, it's really kind of sad, and I think this is, it opens up, it makes us feel like a community rather than a cloistered group of houses, and so I think you guys have done really well on that. And Navar, I don't know if you want to go to the next slide on 5, A 5.5, it shows the front of it. And this is where I think you guys have really done a good job. I can understand about putting the gate on the entry for privacy. I don't know that that's totally necessary, and what we're often trying to do is connect the houses to the neighborhoods, but it, for me, it could go either way. But the private balconies above, they still connect to the street, but yet they allow some privacy for the inside of the house, but, so you've kind of done a good job of doing both, creating privacy and connecting to the community. And in your drawings or in your floor plans, it's just amazing to me when I think back of the first and second iteration. It was 5.5.
That was the back.
It may not be in that slideshow, that was just fine.
For 5, you were talking about the front of the building, though?
Oh, yeah, our plans, so it is 5.5, so it's just, it's not that important, because I'm...
So I just want to make sure I was getting to the front of the building when we were talking about the front of the building.
We switched them at the very beginning of the slideshow.
Ah ha. Thank you.
That makes a difference.
That makes a difference. There you go. Here it is, yeah. So, and then I'm just amazed, the kitchens before were so tiny, and it was like, really, people, there was like no counter space. It was like an island floating out in nowhere, and what you guys have done, and especially to have a window over the sink, which is so rare anymore these days and yet it's so desired. And so when I saw that, especially on Units 1 and 4, I was like, wow, this is, you guys have done a really great job on taking something that really wasn't working so well in the first iterations and have really, you know, shown us that what a good, competent team could do, so kudos, very good.
Well, that explains where the color scheme came from.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Right. You probably had a lot more interesting colors before you chimed in, didn't you?
Yeah, I also think it's, I mean, everyone agrees...
Yeah, I, I also think it's, I mean, everyone agrees that it's better than what had gone before. I think that part of the comments about the, the lack of interest in the front could be addressed in part by Commissioner Banta's, talking about a small garden gate at the entry that increases the transition between the street and the private space in front of the house. But also some really robust planting. You know, I know that part of the area is going to be paved with pervious pavers, so that people can sit there. But having some planting that comes up and, and gives some kind of shape and form in front of, in front of those long windowless places. I'm glad you ended, added the windows to the garages, because I think that helps, too. It doesn't hurt to have light in your garage. You can, people do things with their garage. They have the, the parking spaces. I think that we'll be getting at least one, if not two, additional street parking spaces. So I know that there had been earlier discussions about what happens with guest parking and all that, but I think that we're coming out ahead on that. What neighbor Bukowski brought up about the litter on the redwood tree. I have a redwood tree that's similar size, and it does drop a whole lot of stuff. So if you have completely flat roofs, I don't know how you're, how people are going to address the accumulation up there. And maybe that's something that needs to have a little bit more thought. Other than that, I think that it looks, it looks like it's going in the right direction.
One other comment I did want to make that I forgot. Since the rear units don't have garages, and I don't know what your secure parking situation is going to be inside the house, I was thinking something you could do in those outdoor spaces in the back is provide a bike locker in those two spaces, if you, if you have difficulty finding it, if, in the unit. But that could be something you could do.
So did we answer the questions that had been put out in front of us? Feedback regarding the design? Do we have the findings for conditional use? Address the concerns? Seems like everyone's feeling that this project's going in the right direction, so. Okay. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you come back. Good.
Soon, I hope.
We hope not. Alright. Are there, this is the last item on the agenda, is Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments?
Welcome, Commissioner Giroux. You've all been really welcoming, and so I just wanted to, to just say that I know I have big shoes to fill, and I am very excited about this opportunity, and, and looking forward to working with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. I have one, I do have one comment, and it was brought up by the first study session. And I think it would be useful to, at some point, really relook a little bit at the parking regulations that create a minimum, and then the possibility of slicing the minimum in half, because that, 29 units with family-friendly and 15 parking spaces in an area that's congested already seems problematic to me, but.
If I could just respond to that? The regulations are somewhat flexible, in that they do allow an applicant to apply for a conditional use permit to exceed the maximum parking. And the findings are such that the, that they can justify that that amount of parking is actually necessary, and that it won't detract from use of other modes and things like that. Those are the findings that the commission has to make. But if you can make a finding that additional parking is necessary and won't detract from use of other modes, you can allow more than the maximum.
Well, they were at the minimum, minimum. They could have, they could have.
Right. Well, they can certainly go up.
Yeah.
Without needing any special approval. And then if they go above that, they would need that use permit.
On that, I feel that if, when they come back, if the.
Wait, I'm, I'm going to stop you right here.
Okay.
This is for Commission comments right now, and we're kind of getting into talking about.
A specific project.
A specific project.
Okay.
Okay. Keep us in line.
Commissioners in line.
Okay. Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.